It's a special meeting of the school board, Monday, September 8th, 2014. We will start with a moment of silence and pledge of allegiance, please.
Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the Republic of America, the one nation, the one God, the one justice, the one who governs the world.
Recognition of persons wishing to address the board? Okay. Information, discussion items?
Yes, we have a short presentation on, I'm sorry, on enrollment facility use and the deficit. Mrs. Tenniswood has some additional copies of the handouts for anyone who needs them. President Beuer, members of the board, thank you. We won't spend a great deal of time tonight in presentation, give you time for discussion and questions. Tonight specifically, we want to take a look at enrollment, facility use, and the impact of both of those on the deficit. Having a week into the school year, we have a better idea of our enrollment, though we will not have count day until what is called Fourth Wednesday, coming up here, first Wednesday in October. Just as a review, when we met in July and August, we reviewed kind of the short history back from a year ago, a year ago in July 2013. The board adopted a 1314 budget that called for the use of $650,000 of fund balance. By January of 2014, when we really started looking at the 1415 school year, we identified that we would be 70 students less than what we were currently in that school year. We were talking at that time about the possibility of purchasing two buses and some other issues that made a $2.1 million deficit. Throughout the course of the winter and spring, kindergarten roundup numbers were much less than we had anticipated. We had had a stretch of about five to six years in which kindergarten enrollment was between 280 and 300 students. That was what we were basing that 70 fewer student figure on. When it came in, in the 240 range, we adjusted that for 100 fewer students. And that projected shortfall became $2.6 million. We identified over the course of the winter and spring several personnel reductions. We contracted services in the custodiality and grounds. We made other adjustments to the tune of 1.5 million, which left June 30th, July 1st, and adopted 1415 budget, calling for the use of $1.1 million in fund balance. I'm somewhat pleased to report that initial figures from the audit, which is being completed right now, tell us that we should come out on a positive end there, though the tune to which we don't know yet. But it should be a few dollars that we had not anticipated, so that that will knock a little bit off of that 1.1 million. I was hoping that pupil count would be such that instead of the 100, it would truly be the 70, as you'll see here shortly, that's not going to be the case. But we do have reductions in, further reductions in teaching staff. The kindergarten numbers were such that 240 versus 280 to 300 meant that we planned for three less kindergarten sections this coming year. We never filled those three sections, we never stabbed those three sections, and yet those three sections were part of the budget that was adopted at the end of June, because at that point in time, we were being super cautious. So, three additional teaching staff that will be taken out of the budget when a revision is done here after the audit and after count day could, again, reduce that $1.1 million to the tune of $240,000, or about $80,000 per staff member. Further, further good news in a bad situation was that additional late retirements meant that we did not have to further lay off any staff members to reduce those three sections. And so, though we would have loved to have had 300 kindergarteners, we would have loved to have been running those sections, we did not have to reduce teaching staff any further in terms of people. Enrollment. This chart here shows you comparative information over the last five school years, six if you wanted to include this current year, on what the headcount was in September on the first Friday of the school year. Okay? So that would have been about the fourth, you know, not about, that would have been the fourth day of the school year, right? What our headcount was in 2009-10, it was 5120. By the October count date, our actual FTE turned out to be 5046, or a difference of about 73 students. A lot of that has to do with the fact that schools are still catching up in their requests for records, and so we're still catching up in terms of figuring out who's actually with us, who has moved. You can see that that number has decreased last year all the way down to 2582, which I believe is a positive sign for the area and the economy. Remember, 2009-10, part of that 2008 recession, people leaving Michigan in droves. There's a reason why we're the only state who lost a congressional seat in the 2010 census, because so many people left. And so, as a result, that was having, that played into people just continuing to move. SM and HT is Saint Mary's and Holy Cross. That are, those are additional FTE that we are able to claim for providing elective teachers and elective instruction to those two parochial buildings, whether it be music, art, PE, or Spanish. This year, I'm not as optimistic that we'll get to 17, because we were not able to offer Spanish, as we had a Spanish teacher leave, we did not retain that Spanish teacher, or we didn't, no, we didn't have, oh, the Spanish, yes. Many of our Spanish teachers are also doing part of the splits, part of their assignments now the splits, and it is not in our financial best interest to hire people specifically to send over to the parochial schools, because we do not receive, we only see partial FTEs, and it just doesn't work out. But you would add those back to the count, and so you see the total October FTE. Last year was only off eight students from where we were on the fourth day of the school headcount. So if we're pretty close, if we're pretty close this year, that 4440 figure in red in 2013-14, which was last year's count, minus this year's headcount, is down about 80, is down 84 FTE. We lose a couple more, that's why I'm saying I think we're going to be closer to the 100 than what I was hoping was the 70. So our budget that was adopted at the end of June should be somewhat accurate or pretty darn accurate with respect to loss of students, and we won't necessarily receive a big bump or a helpful bump, as we did with reduction of the three teaching staff.
Can I ask you a quick question?
Absolutely. Anytime.
What date is the official day for the?
For the count day?
Yeah.
Count day is, I believe, October 2nd or 3rd, whatever, that Wednesday. That first Wednesday in October.
So it's got a couple?
The first? Yeah, it's coming up.
So we still got a couple more weeks on?
We've still got a couple more weeks till hopefully everybody hangs on and stays, and nobody moves, and nobody drops out, and those kind of things.
Okay.
And maybe a couple more move in. That would be awesome. Projections. I started last year's, I gave you this past year's numbers, the 296 in kindergarten. Remember, I was saying that we were traditionally, for the last several years, between 280 and 300 in kindergarten. As of Friday's headcount, it was 231 for 1415. And you can see that in the elementary, those numbers across the different grade levels. For 1516 in red, it's a projection. It's a projection based on the fact that for, in order to put the proposal on the November ballot for funds for purchasing buses, part of the requirements by the Michigan Department of Treasury was to request and contract for a new enrollment projections by an independent organization. And so, we commissioned that study, we got those figures, and using those figures, what is up there are those projections, which are pretty darn consistent with the 231 we see this year. As we move through the next, and I went through 2018-19, because that was how far out the study went, in terms of their projections. And their projections are based on mathematical formulas that they use after collecting information from live births in the county, in the school district, and housing starts and other factors. You can see just at the elementary level, over the next several years, if those projections come to pass, we would be down another 311 students, just at the elementary level, over the next four years. At the middle school, here, we're just rolling grades forward. We don't have necessarily any need to project, other than taking a look at, and we've had pretty consistent enrollment, we don't lose from grade to grade once we get them, for the most part. Kindergarten's always an interesting thing that we watch, as well as our junior and senior classes, to see how many kids we're retaining versus how many might be going to alternative ed or some of the other diploma completion programs. But the middle school, we roll everybody forward, and in that, doing that, we see that we're still rolling larger eighth grade classes out, smaller sixth grade classes in, except for next year, so that over the course of the next four years, we could be down 87 middle school students. At the high school, those numbers are, again, kind of rolled forward, not knowing exactly what will happen with students leaving to do diploma completion courses, it's just solely moving the classes forward. And in that realm, we'd be down 192. 590 students district-wide over the course of the next four years. If that is accurate, that is really troublesome. I go back to those elementary projections, because we're talking about facilities, primarily elementary facilities here this evening, show those numbers again. I went building by building last week and spoke with each of the principals, I took a floor plan with me, and I asked them, okay, what is in every one of your classrooms? So, room 101, well, that's a third grade class, 201, that's a second grade class, and those, so forth and so on. So that, in Palms, there are 14 total classrooms that are available, these are classrooms available, in addition to an art and a music room, so 16 classrooms. Bell has 20 classrooms, they have two small classrooms, very, that you can remove the wall and make into one regular-sized classroom. Currently, I believe Bell is using that for title purposes, Title I instructional purposes. Pine River, same way, because of course, they're the same footprints, and they use their two small classrooms for their cognitively impaired, special ed cognitively impaired program, and an art and a music. Gearing has 14 classrooms. In essence, they really have 20, but they're currently using five for the early childhood special ed program, and they're using one for their cognitively impaired program, and they have an art and a music room as well. Eddy has 20 available classrooms, art and music. Certainly, in a couple of these buildings, the art rooms are, and music rooms are designed specifically for those purposes, and it would be difficult to make them a regular classroom. In other buildings, excuse me, they could be used as a regular classroom if the space were needed, they're more of a traditional classroom that's just being used for music type of thing. Some of the classrooms, for example, I said, these are the available classrooms. At Palms, I believe there's currently 20 classrooms being used for kindergarten through fifth grade. The other classrooms, the other four, Spanish is being taught in one, they have a resource room, which is learning, which is for students who are identified as learning disabled, but the, and then maybe speech and social work works out of them. But all of those could be moved into other spaces within the buildings that are available, smaller conference-type spaces, or just smaller rooms, if indeed that were to be the case.
What is TC on the last?
Teacher consultant, so again, a special ed teacher going in, working individually with one or more students.
Thank you.
Yep. So that slide showed you available classrooms, this slide will show you classroom, current classroom use. And in 1415, I mentioned Palms was using 10 classrooms for kindergarten through fifth grade sections. If we project using the data that I had shown earlier, now, I projected that data based on kindergarten across the entire district, I have provided you in information that is not on slides, but individual, building by building, grade by grade numbers. And you see that they would project out to Palms using nine classrooms in 1516, and potentially eight in 1617, if kindergarten continues to be one section there. So they'd be exiting two sections of fifth each year, bringing in one section of kindergarten each year, that's how that's going from 10 to nine to eight, potentially. Bell River, the 20 classrooms, the two small ones that are currently being used for Title I, but could become a full classroom, or a 21st classroom if necessary. Currently, they use 16, 15 to 14, there's Pines, Gearing's, and Eddy. Couple of considerations when we talk about elementary facility use, though, that I think we all need to be aware of. And that is, buildings with CI programs, that was Pine River and Gearing, they have to have sections of regular education students for least restrictive environment purposes. We cannot isolate a special ed program in a building with no regular ed peers. So for example, if we were to move the CI program from Gearing, we'd have to move it to another building that had regular ed peers. We couldn't just move all the CI kids into, let's say, a building with all early childhood programs, because then they would not have peers for which they can take elective classes and interact with, so. There's not sufficient space at this time to fully close an elementary entirely and still operating the early childhood special education program. If you remember in Gearing, I said that they are currently using five classrooms for that program. Okay? So though we might be able to move out the other sections, we can't fit all the other sections and those five in current space. That's not to say that that's not in time possible, based on what we see for projections and the continued loss of students and loss of sections. Further investigation must be done to determine whether common grade level facilities would generate budget savings in addition to the educational benefit. I've spoken frequently about the idea of maybe a pre-KK building, or a K2 building, something like that. There is, it is my truly held belief that educationally, that would be a very, very positive move, but at this point in time, I'm not sure whether we'd generate savings, because we have done the, not, that would be the horizontal grouping of students, we have done the split classrooms in order to bring groups of kids together, and as a result, and in the information that you see that I gave you that supports this data, almost all of our current programming sections, other than the kindergarten at Palms, is in the 26 to 30 in a class range. So what that would actually generate for us still needs to be determined, except, again, I will reiterate, that there is some very solid research that talks about the educational benefit of having more kids at the same grade level, more teachers of the same grade level interacting and working with one another. Space does exist, though, to move the preschool programs from ECEC to an elementary school, and place the ECEC facility on the market for sale. And I would encourage us to have that conversation, and to potentially move on putting that facility back on the market, to see if we can indeed get an infusion of cash that helps us over the next year, or maybe two, to help offset the deficit, though it is not a silver bullet that will solve it forever. But the infusion of cash would help, as well as not having the potential liability of the heat and the boilers and anything that might go wrong over there.
In your second, let me see, at this time, meaning?
Well?
What school year are we saying? Or school years?
Yep. I'm thinking that depending on what we do with the ECEC facility, because if we move those preschool programs into a Eddy, let's say, that does have the room, that could absorb them right now, all right, then, we would then be looking a couple of years out to be doing that, to potentially getting down to four buildings.
Okay.
All right? But if we left ECEC open, then we could potentially, but what would you rather have? Would you rather have five buildings with ECEC, or the five elementaries? That's, that's kind of some of the thinking as for currently.
I have a question on that, on the ECE, EC building, if we were to sell it, does that money go in the general, back in the general fund, or does it go into like a bond, pay off a bond, or?
No.
On the chair, when it comes to sale of property?
There's no outstanding bonds on the ECEC, and I believe at this point, it would go directly back to the general fund.
Okay. Okay, I didn't know if there's any strings attached, or?
There's no outstanding, no outstanding debt on that facility.
Okay.
In the split classrooms that we did, we've got projected for this year, what was our final estimated total savings in doing that?
We saved one teacher for each split classroom, or we were able to reduce a teaching section for each, so we have four, four split classrooms right now. That was four teaching sections, or again, 80,000 per, $320,000 savings. And as the, again, the information that the board received as background and data for the slides, you see I project out where potential splits could happen in the next two years.
And they really don't change the quantity of, just because the kids just keep moving from one grade up?
Correct. Until such time as, obviously, the fifth graders move on, and then low and behold, in some buildings, a new one can get formed.
You showed the elementary projections.
Mm-hmm.
On, no, the classrooms.
Okay.
What do we look at, at the middle school and high school? Can you, I mean, you may be not known now, but maybe our next meeting?
Okay.
Because what I'm getting at, I'm just throwing something out there.
Right.
It's not a suggestion, or just a thought. If we were to look at our elementaries as K4, and middle school 57, and 812 for the high school, is it educationally sound, first of all, and do we have the facilities?
I don't know if I can say we have the facilities, I will have it for your next meeting, because I think it's, that's the purpose of, I think, getting together every two weeks, is to keep, keep these ideas flowing, and then we go back and we do the work to provide it for you. My first reaction to educationally sound is certainly because we know how much of the content that is normal, that has traditionally been done in ninth grade, has been pushed down to eighth grade, right? We know that many districts throughout the state, their high schools are 712 buildings, right? And those, so those seventh and eighth graders have those opportunities to interact. So I don't see a reason why that wouldn't be the, why that would be in any way educationally detrimental, it's just a matter of looking at classroom space.
That's what I am.
Yeah, so we'll do that.
I have a comment, or a question. This doesn't seem to have anything to do with what we previously have discussed. We, we have discussed the repurposing and redistricting, and all I'm getting out of this is just to get rid of ECEC.
Well, it certainly speaks.
Where's?
It certainly speaks to the idea of repurposing, because we can take, what I wanted to show you is just basically how we're using facilities now, and what, where we're headed in the future with respect to sections. Repurposing would mean to move programs from one place to another, and that's part of what we talked about here today, including.
That's just a really small portion of if we moved, if we moved preschool or whatever, isn't, is easy, I mean, that's just a really small.
Sure.
This is not covering anything that we really have talked about in advance.
Okay. The repurposing would really, the savings is going to come in, in your projection, 1617, when we're down enough students that we could physically close a building.
Well, I mean, it appears as though we'll have, we'll have, we will be down sections again next year, we'll be down teacher sections again next year, to the tune of, you know, three, four, or five, if the numbers continue to hold. We can determine whether or not, and that's why I wanted to give you the information that we got, is to say, okay, given where we're headed with loss of teaching sections, and how that opens up space in facilities, all right, what would be the best course of action to, to make a move now that does not save us, save us money? Moving to four facilities, based on the fact of where our class sizes are now, all right, would not necessarily generate any savings, but we could do it now, knowing that in the course of the next two years, that those buildings will become less crowded, because we'll have less sections, right? Or, we can say, we'll do that over the course of the next two years, when, and try to maintain a consistent level of students in the buildings themselves.
Yes?
Couple of the things. If we go to the second slide, well, not counting the title page, the second slide, called enrollment. So, I was thinking about this, and basically, if we go to that first column, you're looking at 764 less students, you do the count. So, my question then became, if we went back, excuse me, if we went back five years, with our present population, and we were standing around, deciding what we're going to do, and it's 2009, 2010, and we have 4,356 students, and we have four elementary buildings, not counting the ECEC, we're going to talk about that totally separately, would we all then say, gee, we need to build another elementary school, when we have 764 less students in the district? Because we're overcrowded? I mean, I don't think so. I really don't see that as being something that we would agree upon. So, therefore, my, one of my thoughts is that, well, okay, then I want to go, let's deal with the ECEC right now, so we can get that out of the way, in my opinion, anyway, at least out of my way. We don't have to move anybody out of ECEC right now, we can put it on the market. And if we sell it, and, that would be wonderful if we did, but I don't foresee, I mean, I'm not an expert, but I don't see people banging down our door saying, let's buy the ECEC, and? And unless it's a community foundation and they just get tired of all the money they have and they want to give us some of it. But barring that happening, I don't think that's going to happen.
No, it was on the poll before.
So, you know, um, so let's just keep everybody at the ECEC. Let's keep them there. Keep doing what we're doing there. If something happens, we sell it or it needs repair or something, then we'll deal with it. We'll cross that bridge. But I don't really think that's part of the discussion for tonight. Um, now going back to my first point. We have too much capacity. And now it last July, um, we went through this. And in fact, we talked about this before, but, and thank you to the administration for putting together this background of all the things that we had to do. This is the July twenty-eighth meeting. And it had tons of information about other school districts and about what if we, and I'm not going to be quoting it, but what if we did K to two here or we did three to five there or whatever those juggling those numbers were. And there was also talk about the buses and what routes they were going to have and all of that thing, all of that. So my thought is, is that now, um, and then we're looking at the numbers. They're just going to get worse. We are going to the public and saying, we want a bond passed for buses. We're doing this because we're being responsible and we looked at all the options for busing. Whether it was for leasing buses or privatization or, or whatever. And we came out that the cheapest way for us to operate over the next ten years or so was to buy our own buses. So it's always hard to say, well, we're going to spend money to save money. But in fact, that's exactly what we were doing. Now, in the short term, in the next year or two, we could have saved some money by leasing it. But we would have paid the piper down the road. And you can always hear that expression, you know, some legislative bodies kicking the can down the road instead of dealing with the problem that we have now. Well, um, I'm thinking that, uh, that is not, we are the trustees of the public. We have a duty to do two things. We have a duty to deliver a good education to our children. And we have a duty to preserve the assets we have so that, you know, uh, Mr. Snyder and the boys don't walk in one day and say, okay, we're taking over your school district, which isn't about to happen if we don't do something in the next couple of years. I think the role of the board is to decide whether we're going to close an elementary school. I think that the role of the administration then will be, okay, if we decide that, and I'm not saying we are, but if we do decide it, and frankly, I'm in favor of it, then there's, there's the goal. Not pleasant. I would much rather us be saying, you know, we really shouldn't have more than ten kids in a classroom. I would much rather have that. And, and we should have every program in the world. I, you know, I first moved into this, into this area, I remember Port Huron went to half-day sessions. And there, I mean, it was chaos up there. Um, well, we're not at that point yet, but if we're, but if we don't start acting now, I think we're going to get there. We have a great educational program in this district. And if you look at all the numbers that came out from the State Department of Education, kudos to the, all the teachers and the administration. We had phenomenal numbers. Our numbers were so good that we're at the top of every school district in the county now. And one other district is tied with us, but they're not ahead of us anymore. Um, so my point is, um, I think we've discussed this a long, long time. And I think we've done a lot of consideration about it. I think the administration has done a lot of consideration about it. And I, um, I really think that, um, we've covered every single option. And now I think we have to move forward, step on this, get it done, and let's move on. So now that the next few meetings we have, we can just say, okay, now let's talk about the bus routes. Let's talk about the, the allocation of students to the classrooms and let's talk about those things. So that everybody knows next year what's coming. And because we're not doing it this year, we're not closing the school this fall or today or tomorrow or next week or even in January. We're not doing that, but we are going to do it in the fall. So I say, let's vote on it. Um, and I would like to get it out of the way. And, and nobody can say, we haven't considered this and listened to a lot of people over the meetings about that. And it's just time for us to do something. Those are my thoughts.
I have, I have to agree with Mike on that. Why, why are we prolonging the announcement?
Well.
I mean, we, like, like you said, we've been going over this for months.
Sure.
And, and we had the agreement that we were supposed to be having monthly updates towards that goal for next fall and, and.
Yeah, but Amy, I, excuse me, I really think it's our job to do that. Uh, we make that decision.
Yeah, we have to at this point.
No, I appreciate that, but we, right.
Yeah, you're right.
That's right. But it's our call. And then the nice thing is then they get to live with it. But it is our call. And in fact, I, I just, I don't want to say it, the administration has done anything on this that they shouldn't have done because.
Oh, they have, I mean.
They don't, yeah, we're, they're doing their job and now we're doing ours. And, and that's what I'm, it's kind of defining the roles of what we do, so. You know, I, okay, I'm sorry.
Well, respectfully, the, the seven hundred and sixty-four less students are across thirteen grade levels, across ten facilities, um, and across however many square miles of this school district.
I appreciate that, but so, in other words, we go back five years and we have nine facilities. Are we still going to say, well, we need another facility? I mean, whether it's nine or ten or five and four on the elementary level, I mean, I, that doesn't bother me at all. All that says is we have to make adjustments. And, and so that to me is not an argument. I, I, I really don't see that. Yes, it's a big district. That's why we have school buses. That's why we do a lot of things around here. But it's still, the numbers are seven hundred and sixty-four or seven hundred and fifty or seven hundred less. Whatever those numbers are, if we were talking five years ago, we wouldn't say, we got to build a new building. Whether it's a middle school, high school, or a elementary school.
Still, we have.
Michael, are you looking at a committee being formed like we did when we end up checking everything out and we end up closing Washington?
No, um, I, I think that what I'm looking at is we, we, we say, we're closing the school. Because I think we've made, at least in my mind, that's the way to go. Then I think what we then say is, now which one is going to get closed? Okay, then we do the Washington thing because that's what we did before. In other words, we decided we were going to close the school. The question was which one we were going to close.
Right.
And it turned out to be Washington. You know, for better or for worse, that's what it turned out to be. And that's what I'm saying we have to do here.
Okay, I just wanted to see.
No, I appreciate that, John.
Mr. Folsky.
Oh, I just wanted to see what, how, what direction you're kind of heading in, okay.
And tying into Mr. Folsky's earlier question about changing, changing building levels. Is it, is it K through four? That, I think that's not against at all what you're saying, Mr. McNamee, in that we close a building. And then the next question is, how do we do that?
Right.
How do we, how do we juggle the numbers? We don't have to, we don't have to juggle the numbers first to see that we're over capacity today. We're a hundred and fifty-three more students over capacity next year. Two hundred and eighty-seven the year after that total.
Under capacity, you mean, yeah.
Under, yes, I'm sorry, under capacity.
Correct, that's, yeah, the, the next step is, it's the dirty work and they get to do it, not us. But that's, then they will come back to us and say, okay, this is, these are our options.
Right.
Whether it's K three or whether it's a K four, whatever those options are, it's a reality. And nobody here wants to do this.
Well, right.
But we have to.
We've been discussing this for so long that the public already knows that we put it on hold last year so that we could take our time, you know, to make a thorough, well-informed decision. So I think now is the time that we need to step forward and do that. Also, you know, with, with the, um, with the ballot proposal as well. We're doing our part.
Right. So, uh, Mr. Bewer, uh, I see you, what, your thoughts?
Classroom, just looking at the information we have now, classroom size to compare, let's now say, instead of looking at sixteen, seventeen, go to fifteen, sixteen. Classroom size, in your opinion, Dr. Skolka, where we would fall closing an elementary school?
We would, I, I think classroom usage or, or, or student-teacher ratio.
Student-teacher ratio.
I think it'd be very similar to where we are now, which is already in the twenty-seven to twenty-nine to thirty range. Um, the only way we could conceivably bring that down is to bring more kids together of the same grade level with the same number of teachers. So there's the possibility that that might drop a student or two if all the third graders in, you know, apart, were together.
Okay.
You know, cause you might have a twenty-five and, and four twenty-nines. So as a result, you might end up with five twenty-eights in that situation.
Okay.
Right?
So a downside would not be a larger student-to-teacher ratio?
Uh, we're pretty much maxed out there. I mean, we're, in, in the effort to save as much as we possibly can, we've pretty much maxed out there. At least given the current, uh, bar, collectively bargained language.
Yeah, and, I mean, that's the other key is that, yeah, given the current language, that language expires in one year.
Well.
And beginning next school year, there's a new language.
There's, the, the existing language holds until we have a new agreement.
Yes, I understand that. So that, what I'm saying is, is that still is, the current language is in effect on paper for one year until the new agreement's reached.
Right. Which if, if a new agreement isn't reached by the start of the following year.
Well, that's a different.
I know, I'm just saying, just, just to be honest with everyone.
We're, I'm not trying to be dishonest with anybody.
No, you're not.
What I'm saying is, is that yes, that's something, that's a bridge.
Right.
That will have to be crossed.
Right.
When they get to it. But for now, the present reality is.
Correct.
Two million dollars sitting there staring us in the face. So let's deal with that.
Okay. But truly based on the projections, you know, that the study had done, our enrollment really for fifteen, sixteen, sixteen, seventeen, doesn't change universally at all.
Our kindergarten enrollment's not changing, our overall enrollment is certainly.
Is going down.
Is certainly going down.
Correct.
We don't have a choice.
So they split, they split classes now, or let's say they're at three, four.
Right.
Okay, great, next year, you know, that would go up. Is there any coming behind there? Can you project where we're going to have like a double-double split?
Um, I don't believe so though.
Okay.
I'm unsure as to what we're talking about, the double-double split. Would it be like combining what type of?
Well, the new kids coming in.
Oh.
New enrollment coming in.
No, I mean, a K one split, for example.
Right.
Um, let's just say that, um, you had twenty, at Palms, you've got twenty-one kindergarteners.
Okay.
If you had twenty-one again, you'd have forty-two. You're not, that's between two teachers.
Right.
You can't go down to one teacher of forty-two. So you're still going to have two teachers, there's no way to split.
But that K one this year will become.
There's a, there's a two-three. There's a two-three, that's the youngest we've done. And that will, should become a, a three, four next year.
Those are still true to those classes or moved out of the middle.
Unless building configurations are changed to the extent where you no longer need them and you could get the same bang for your buck, just keeping them, keeping them with their own grade.
I was just wondering if there's more splits coming or, or there would be a savings.
Um, I think in the, in the two sheets that I gave you.
Right.
The projections were still, I think, four, four splits a year.
Okay, alright.
Well, I'm not sure, um. Alright, I, I'll make the motion and, uh, that we close the school and that we vote to close an elementary school. Um, I could be real popular, okay, let's close the high school. And then, no, I'm like, oh. But barring that, I think, uh, yeah, I think, no, I think it's time for us to vote to close an elementary school. And then we work out the logistics of what that means. And it might mean adjustments at the middle school levels. It could mean a whole host of adjustments, but I think it's, I think it's a rock solid place to start.
I support.
I don't think I have enough information yet. I want to find out about kids, you know, um, eighth grade going into ninth grade, they're using high school facilities. And then the elementary are, you know, the fifth graders going into the middle school facilities. I think, I'd like to see the facilities.
Yeah, but our classes now of the kids in third, fourth, fifth grade are bigger classes moving into middle school, high school than what are coming in. So it's just going to show that our problem is not going to be moving forward with the upper. It's strictly going to be in the elementary because our number is going to be dropping faster in the elementary than they are in.
Right.
Middle school, because the larger classes are still moving up.
But I'm, I'm thinking about if we move the kids up five, fifth grade into the middle school. If there's facilities.
Right.
Then I can see us closing the elementary right now and then. Right now, I, I don't see us doing it. I, I think we're, we're going to squeeze ourselves too tight and we're not going to have enough room to breathe.
Well, my only point would be that when we say right now, the numbers next year are going to be another hundred less. So.
Correct.
I, I, and what I'm getting at is, you know, I certainly appreciate the concern. I mean, I, like I said, I wish we could just have eight to ten kids in a class. But, uh, but there's a financial aspect to this.
Correct.
That has to be addressed. And so far over the years, it's been addressed in a lot of various ways. Uh, the teachers have taken hits, the administrators have taken hits. Um, we put off buying buses, we've done a whole lot of, we've done a host of things.
Correct.
But now we're, I, I personally think, John, that we're at the point where it's become, not pleasant, but it's got to be done. That's my thought.
I, I believe that whether you approve this motion or not, the task is the same for myself and the ad team. And that is to bring you in two weeks, um, various scenarios of building use, um, complete with, well, this, how, how, like floor plans and where kids would go, whether it be, uh, no moving, uh, whether we maintain K fives or, or all of those things. And so however this turns out in terms of a vote, um, I believe, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, our work is going to be the same in terms of bringing you folks, um, scenarios and different things to consider.
Almost, except that the scenario will take place, there's, in a four-building situation as opposed to a five-building situation. And so it's, 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 um, it's a question of where you're going to, you know, where are you going to make the adjustments? And that's why I think it is a little different, depending on what we do.
And considering, you know, our term, terminology of right now, right now is fifteen, sixteen is what we'd be talking about.
Correct.
Correct.
Correct. Yes, Mr. Rich.
I, first of all, I appreciate Mr. McNamee's, um, comments and that sort of a thing. But I think that voting on this at a special meeting is not a good idea. And I think it hasn't been, the public hasn't exactly known that we're going to be voting on this specific thing tonight. And so I'm, I'm with Mr. Folsky on this, I'm not going to be able to, uh, vote in favor of it.
Other comments?
Didn't we post these meeting dates quite a couple of months back?
Yeah.
So.
Meeting dates have been posted.
We didn't just call this meeting last week. The public's been aware of that we were conducting these meetings throughout the summer so that we could come up with a decision, correct?
Correct, and the agenda was posted as, as we normally do.
Right, but quite a few weeks, months prior.
But people did not, with all due respect, know that that specific thing was going to be said, so I...
Well, then, these are fact-finding meetings, is what we're trying to do, to make it, to come up with the right decision. So at any time, the facts may lead us to a certain judgment or a call.
To an action. To an action, we're not...
Any other comments? We have a motion on the floor to vote to direct the administration to...
No, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
It's not what's written on the agenda, it's what Mr. McNamee proposed.
Correct. You want to...
Okay, my, my understanding is, I'm thinking, for the academic year 2015, 2016, we're voting today that we will be closing an elementary school, and then we're directing the, well, just leave it at that for now, and then we can make another motion about directions and things, right after that.
Motion by Mr. McNamee?
Support.
Support by Mrs. Frank. Any additional comments or questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose, same sign?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried, negative, no vote, Mr. Folsky and Mr. Richly.
So now I don't know if we need to give, I mean, we've, the directions now will be that the planning stages will now be entered into, and the administration will start doing that...
Correct.
And coming up with the options of what this all means, which will encompass, we don't need a motion for that.
No, and I think Mr. Dr. Skolka's comments earlier were saying, it's driving to the same endpoint anyway.
I have a question.
Yes, Mrs. Frank.
The, back to the use of the ECEC building, is the, the preschool program, is that profitable to the district?
If you want to speak to that, I know that our intent is to make sure that it runs in the black, and I believe that it has.
Good evening. Ms. Phan? I can, I, I have not saw the audited figures right now, but the revenues are exceeding expenditures for the ECEC, that is, for the childcare program. That does include the recouping of about $80,000 for the use of the building that, that is flown through back into the general fund for the use of the electricity and for the maintenance, and several items like that.
So we're taking all that into consideration?
Absolutely.
Okay.
We'll have to look at every aspect until, to say, but what that isn't showing is, like Dr. Skolka had previously indicated, if a boiler does break down...
Correct.
Those recouping of monies for electricity or indirect costs are absorbed each year. So it's not like those monies are being banked up where they could be utilized for a major maintenance item.
And how much space is needed to run that program? Like, square footage, or classrooms, or?
I believe...
There's no cafeteria use there, or?
Number of classrooms used by the young explorers in those programs.
So, so right now, there are three rooms. There's an infant room, there's a toddler room, which is typically two and some three-year-olds, and then there's a preschool room. The square footage and the facilities are actually governed by the State of Michigan Licensing Bureau.
Okay.
The Department of Human Services stipulates all the requirements as far as square footage, and what amenities have to be provided within each of those physical spaces.
So I could get that information?
We can certainly get it for you.
Okay, thank you.
Do we, way back when, when we first got this, started this program, all these programs, they're supposed to be self-funding, or close to it. So that's what you're saying is...
It is self-funding.
If we were to move this, do we have facilities elsewhere? If we were to move these, I mean, it's something you guys would have to check out.
That would be a part of the evaluation process, to make sure that we can adequately, provide the space required for those programs.
Yeah, like, could they come here, for an example?
No, they wouldn't be able, we, we're maxing out the space here for GSRP.
One more question, though, I, I guess, Brenda, the square footage requirements, wouldn't that be based on pupil count? I mean, if we only had three or four children enrolled, and we wouldn't, what, would that not affect the square footage requirements by the state?
Correct, but I know, for instance, the reason, I'm familiar with this because of the preschool program and the GSRP. So they actually calculate a square footage based on the developmental needs of the, the students. And so, for instance, when I submit my license here, there's a minimum square foot, off the top of my head, and it's going to be rough, but approximately, with 16 students, have approximately, I think, 750 square footage. So then, I mean, that's the basics, but then if we, then you get into ratios and, and what kinds of things have to be included within that classroom. For instance, you know, do you have to have a restroom that's physically enclosed? And again, that varies according to the age limit of the children.
But they'd be based on how many children you're providing a service to?
Yes, that is correct.
Hey, Jen.
So obviously, less children, smaller room.
I mean, two kids, we don't need 700 square feet.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Going back to the comment from Mr. McNamee on ECEC...
Excuse me.
That putting the building up for sale, why couldn't we do that now?
We absolutely could. My intention was not to move those programs out of there until such time as we were required to, but making sure that there was space available in the event that we needed to move them, because we were fortunate enough to sell the space.
Like Mike said, you could leave them right where they are...
Absolutely.
Put it up for sale, nobody's going to be knocking down the door behind that building with their rights.
But what I do want to know...
It was on sale before.
I guess I want to make sure is that it is the will of the board to start the process to list that building again, because it has not been listed for, you know, quite some time.
About a year, I think.
Yeah.
You want, we can make a motion if you'd like.
I think that would be great.
Yeah, I think that'd be great.
All right, so moved.
Support?
Support by Mrs. Murphy. Any other comments? All those in favor of motion, signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose, same sign? So moved.
That's great. It just gives kind of the, the authority to do it.
Authority to do it.
Absolutely. So I can't sell it to my friend or something.
I don't want it.
Probably wouldn't be my friend anymore.
I think we got a realtor agent.
Can't do it, conflict of interest.
Oh, okay.
Oh, no, no, no. Yeah, we need a commercial, we need to make sure it's listed with a commercial broker.
Okay.
Do we know who it was listed with prior?
I will, we'll get all that information.
Everybody's tuned in to remember that.
Resurrected.
That's right.
And they didn't sell it, so...
They didn't sell it, that's true. All right, anything else? With no other comments, we stand adjourned.
Thank you.
See you in two weeks.